Take your time. You give me the signal.
Welcome home.
Uh-oh. That's not good. That's not good.
It was.
What's going on?
I had a cousin that went there for like four days.
Really? What does that mean? Hmm. Never heard of that.
If all sudden there's...
Mean order, roll call please.
Mr. Becker?
Here.
Kenzberger?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Call?
Here.
Thank you very much. We welcome everyone here tonight. Tonight, the working session will have no formal business conducted. It'll be a discussion regarding city financial discussions, revenue and expenses, review and projections, and potential new revenue sources. I'll turn it over to you, Jeff, for your input.
Okay.
Presentation.
Thanks for everybody coming tonight to discuss this topic. I think everybody has an updated packet that I've handed out tonight. There's a few back on the diocese, so people can follow along with this. Been working with the budget and working with council for a year now. We've had a lot of changes within the last, say, month with the state's budget getting passed and getting to understand the state's budget. We had a great working session on strategic planning, which laid out some goals for council and for staff to do, and I want to follow up on a couple of those goals because at least three of them in your top priority were financial in nature. So needed to keep moving on those goals, and tonight is part of addressing that need. As we know, our current year budget, we did have a balanced budget, but it was a very, I'll say stark budget when it comes to capital spending. In almost every department, we did not have any major capital-type purchases. And the need is there for doing that, and I'll get into that. Tonight, I'm looking for direction from you, so I'm going to try to stay focused on a few categories in higher-level discussion. But I need direction from you on what revenue sources may be available to the city going forward, or what expenditures do you want to prioritize so we can develop next year's budget going forward. I want to start tonight by looking not at the revenue side, but going at expenditures. It's really the second page of your memo, and then there's a whole spreadsheet, which is the second document behind it. One of the things that, one of your goals was to look out five years, do a five-year capital plan, and to fund it. So as I started this process, looking for next year's budget, I originally started looking at one year, and then working with Jeff, we realized we need to look at out five years and kind of do some projections, just to get a handle on where things were going. Obviously, we had to make some assumptions in doing that. The number-one assumption that we did is all salaries will increase at 1.75, which is the kind of average of all our union contracts currently, which will be for next fiscal year and one after that, I believe, are really set in stone. The three years out past that, I don't know where we're going, but I had to have a benchmark, so I used that because it's really a given unless we go to no raises or something like that. I don't think that's where anybody here wants to go. Cost of living will go up, so there'll be pressure for raises. We have increasing pension obligations. Just last week, we got our actuarial back for police and fire. The week before that, we got an updated IMRF number to put in here. And with each of those numbers, they not only give us the current year's or next year's projections, but kind of where they see it going in the future. So that's how we built the projections for the pensions. And then the last category that I looked at from the expense side was ERI. Made sure that was in here, so we figured that in. The current year's budget, there's only, what, four-month payments?
Yes.
One quarter's worth, four months' payments in the current year's budget. That was one of the, because the first payment's not due to that fund until the end of December. So that let us slide this year, but we have to pay a full 12 months next year. Getting right into the numbers, the pensions will be going up about 600 and just shy of 640,000 for next year. Wages are another $270,000. And then an additional $360,000 in ERI, for a total of 1.26 million of increased expenses over the current year's budget in just those three line items. We did not get down into any of the budgets. We know that supplies and everything kind of generally go up on an annual basis, but we've been, done a pretty good job of controlling those expenses. I really concentrated on the biggest area of expense to the city and feel like then, as we in the budget process, can deal with those smaller areas outside of the capital, the big capital expenditures. And then projected that out over five years and see where we're going. At the end of year five, we're, have $2.9 million projected, more expenditures than the current year's budget. That maybe seem like a lot, but that's inflation for you. So looking at the long term, we're either going to have to cut expenses or raise revenue by $2.9 million to balance the budget in year five. Looking back more short-term, I'm very comfortable in saying the next two years, we do have a deficit. Next year's deficit is, like I said, just over 1.2 million, 1.26 million dollars. So that's where we're at. We're also facing some expenditures, maybe not in the next year's budget, but definitely the following year in the consolidation of dispatch, as that comes through with some of the, you know, we may have to provide some capital for that consolidated dispatch. We will be entering into an agreement there. I know the chief and our council have been working out that, so that's some extra costs that I haven't figured in any of these numbers yet either. Operations, it does look like, once it's operational, there'll be a slight savings to the city, but it takes that capital to get that new entity up and running as well. Other things that, on the capital side, that we need to look at are our equipment. In the memo, going back to the memo, I talk about public works. You know, our average fleet of pickups is almost 10 years old. The older fleets you have, the more maintenance cost you have. Plow trucks, the fleet average is over, just to take over 15 years. Again, the older the equipment you have, the more maintenance that it requires to keep it on the road. And frontline equipment like those, take a lot of abuse, especially plow trucks during snowstorms. Salt's very corrosive on them. They do take considerable maintenance, even when they're fairly new. A lot of communities have started putting their plow trucks on a nine-, 10-year type Pickup trucks, a lot of communities look at a five-year rotation because you can sell them at a good price after five years, and you can replace your fleet. I'm not saying we're going to do that all at once here, but I'd like to eventually put the city on a path to getting newer equipment. And I've laid out a number of examples in this memo here. Also talked about MFT, where the need for, in public works, for road maintenance. Currently, MFT generates about $600,000 to us, and we have to use general funds for any more than that. It's been several years since the city has done a major road project, probably, what was it? Centennial Hill was the last really big project the city's done. And we've got some needs in our collector streets. We've got some bridge needs that will have to be met at some point in time, so there's critical needs there. A community of our size probably should be spending in the neighborhood of $2 to $3 million on our road infrastructure annually. That includes some of the maintenance-type of stuff that we traditionally do with the MFT dollars. That includes some major patching projects, and then possibly some total reconstruction. We, like I said, it's been a number of years since you've done a total reconstruction. The other item that I highlight here is stormwater. We do some stormwater ditch-type work, very minimal, to keep it, the stormwater moving. However, we don't do any major projects to improve our stormwater situation. As you know, last year, right after I got here, we had a unbudgeted expenditure of about a half million dollars to help the sanitary district out, to clean out the levee here and to help get the levees recertified. Fortunately, that was in the downtown district. It was in the TIF district, so we were able to use some TIF funds, but we have no funds to do stormwater outside of general funds elsewhere in the city. Going in the police department, I already mentioned the dispatch consolidation, squad cars. This is one department we've been pretty good over, last number of years, replacing vehicles. This year, the plan would have called for seven vehicles. We purchased five in the budget, and they've got a good plan to keep those up and running. Fire, we bought them one refurbished ambulance. It's now in service. The current year's budget, there is no replacement of capital equipment in fire. The chief, in fact, every department has given me like a equipment plan that they would like to have replacement for their equipment, whether it's in the fire department, whether it's pumper trucks, ladder trucks, ambulances. So we need to set money aside for it, and right now, we're not doing that. And one of the things I've tried to do in this memo, and I'm not going to read everything, but every department's impacted by decisions that have been made. There's needs everywhere. Just trying to figure out where we're going to go in the future. Some of these needs can be pushed down and tackled, you know, in smaller bites than trying to come up all at once. Try to get a very aggressive maintenance program on vehicles to keep them in the best shape we can, to keep them operational, so when it does snow, for example, the plow trucks don't continually break down, they stay on the road and do what they need to be doing. Do you have any questions at this point? It's about the, on the expenditure side, where I'm getting the numbers from?
Just out of curiosity, on the ERI, I know it, according to these numbers, it comes out as like 2.7 million was the total cost. We're spreading that out over the five-year period that we take the loan out. Just curious, do we have performance reports on that ERI that are available to see exactly, dating back, I know of some of the costs that we incurred last year, whether it be overtime or not filling a position or filling a position and at a higher pay rate? Is all that included in that?
In the ERI payment?
Correct.
No, the ERI payment is the...
Just, just curious how they...
That's just the loan that we have to pay, that pay the pension costs for them, that the operation budget took the hit for the extra overtime and so forth.
Do we have a total? That's my question. I see on paper it was 2.7. Do we have any way of tracking what that true cost was?
It wasn't tracked separately. It'd be very difficult to go back into public works, for example, and see the true cost of that. I know for, in wastewater side, you had to bring a consultant in to sign the paperwork on the plant because both of your certified operators left as part of the ERI before we hired the current ones in. You know, I can get that, that would be an easier one to get because it was a contract where we're running overtime. It's hard to tell sometimes with, it's overtime with ERI or overtime-driven because we had a water main break, for example. We still could have had the water main break and caused overtime without necessarily being an ERI expenditure, so I don't believe that our payroll sheets would allow us to go back and to specifically get that detailed of data.
It could go either way, too. There could be savings based upon that that we don't know about either.
I find that hard to believe. It seems like every position we've replaced come in at a higher pay rate, so...
I can tell you the water operators went down on water operator, from four to three water operators.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we have, we currently are at one less superintendent. You know, we may, we've addressed this, we may see that that doesn't work effectively, but that's where we're at today.
That's why I'm asking. I didn't know if there was a performance report.
So for now, we're down, Dan, we're down about two people, if not three, in...
I think it's three.
You're down one in garb...
One in garbage.
One in garbage.
Water operator, and then one superintendent, I believe.
So...
It's just off the top of my head, though.
Yeah. I believe you're only down three versus pre-ERI. And looking back at the numbers, it's hard to tell because they fluctuated a little bit in a couple of different departments for various reasons. Some part-time numbers got caught in there.
But there was a transition time, of course, with all the retirements, and we did not know who was going to retire until it was done. And so now, we sort of have settled in to where we, our manpower's there, and then some of the moves we've had, retirements and so forth, we still have maybe a position to move and move into, so there are some gains.
Please keep going, Jeff. But does everybody kind of buy into where I did with the salaries and kind of see where I was going with that? And the pension costs? I just wanted to make that clear.
Jeff, do you see state decreases in funding that are...
Yes, we'll get, we'll get to that here in a minute, Mayor. Let's go over to the revenue side of things. Go to this chart. It's the five-year tax revenue history. Jeff did a great job going back and looking at the last five years of our tax revenue history, so we can see where each of the revenue sources are going. Our sales tax obviously increased with the levy district development. You can kind of see that in here, in years fiscal year 13, 14, up to 15. It looks like most all the major retailers were in place for a full year in FY15, because FY15, 16, and 17, essentially, the sales tax for the city was flat during that time period.
What, just out of curiosity, from a budget standpoint, do you know what percentage of, did we project it being flat, or did we budget for an increase?
I believe in fiscal year 15, we did, we expected, I'm thinking it's a 2% lift, and it came back flat largely from 15 on. It's...
Yeah, it looks like it. And I believe in the current year's budget that we're currently in, we projected it at flat. We will take a slight hit with the new state budget in here because there are business districts, sales tax, that extra tax we put in the business districts. The state is now charging us 2% administration fee.
Right.
You know, that's about, what, a $120,000 reduction in that sales tax due to that...
And that's this year's budget?
That started July 1.
Correct.
And will carry forward.
That's an administration fee, and what's the justification? What do they say that's for?
Because they collect that extra tax on our behalf and for them handling the money.
Because they spent too much money, money.
Because they need the money.
Shipping and the handling, Commissioner.
Yeah?
So the big one in here on the decline side is the next one, the riverboat gaming tax. Because it's in our budget, this is the full amount, although we share half of this amount with the city of Peoria. We also have the corresponding expenditure for half this amount. You can see back in 13 where that was, you know, almost $6.9 million. FY17, it's down to 4.8. Current year, we budgeted at $4.5 million, and FY15 was our budget number. So I don't know how far that's going to go before it levels off. And it's a very concerning when you see that big of a drop over five years. Are we going to continue that trend, or is the drop going to slow down? I really hope that drop slows down or starts to reverse itself and you see that revenue source pick up. One thing the city has done is we got used to the higher numbers having that, and it's been hard to ride that wave down as part of the budget. That's the way it is. The next one is also, which is state income tax. You'll see that was essentially flat for this whole period of time from 13 to 17. You'll see $100,000 or so swing one way or another, but that is going down again next year. Did it go down with the state budget, or is this year's going to stay level?
They're taking a 10% reduction on that.
Not surprised. People are leaving.
You know, your other taxes, hotel motel taxes staying pretty flat. Personal property tax, it was up in, through 17, but in 18, we projected it to actually drop in the current year's budget to $1.1 million. We're being shown that it's going to actually be closer to just over a million dollars of what we'll collect in the current fiscal year.
So basically, in this recent budget, they decided to keep more of those funds?
That's correct. That's, if you look at this sheet that I sent you, this is right from the state's website. This not only lists ours, but the sanitary district, mass transit, East Peoria ambulatory, and the high school district. Everybody is taking a deduction in that, and it's hurting when you look at... Fortunately, we did not budget the 1.4, so that's why our fiscal budget was $1,159,000. So it's not as big a hit to us because we were very conservative budget. We had a heads-up that this was going to go this way. If you read the IML analysis, that was pretty well-known. It was going to go down, and they just didn't know exactly how much.
The taxes are still being paid.
Taxes are still being paid. The state's diverting them.
There's no, there's no discount here by the residents here. You're paying less than sanitarians, therefore, they're getting, we're getting less back. No, they're cutting it 25%.
So when you, when you look at that, you look at the other taxes are fairly, fairly spate. And the graphs, you know, really tell that story, and it's really, the gaming tax takes all the others down. Any increase or reduction on the other taxes are relatively minor compared to the reduction we've seen over the last five years in gaming taxes. So going into next budget year, FY19's budget year, I'm going to have, we as a council and myself as a city administrator working with staff, are going to have to be very conservative with our revenue projection because our trends show down, the state's new budget shows down, and I don't see it going any other way as far as our revenues as they currently are today. We can talk about things we can do to increase our revenue that are in our control. As you know, a non-home role community does not have that many options as a home role community does. So have more discussion before I get into some of the options. And one thing I want to, want to point out, you know, it's not listed on here, but the property taxes, it's commendable that we've spent and kept the property taxes level, not increased those. You know, my preferences, and everybody always complains about property taxes first and foremost, but we'll talk a little bit more about that in the future. But it's very commendable of holding the line on all our taxes, but when our revenues are declining, we have to look at either cutting expenses or raising revenues, so...
You know, I think we've taken a stance at the council for the last 10 years that, you know, our collective view of property taxes, that it's probably the least fair of the taxes that we collect, so we've done what we can to hold the city's rate constant, which has been, has been very constant over the last 10 years. As to the state revenues, in the new state budget, which the state absolutely had to come up with a budget this year. Do I like it, or anyone else at this table like it? No. What they've done in this budget is diverted funds, as we've already spoken, from municipalities to state coffers to help the state pay their bills. Makes it more difficult for us, but without a state budget, the business climate within the state would further deteriorate, and everything just gets exponentially worse. But the state's tack on this basically will force this community, which is why we're here, and virtually every community in the state to look at other revenue streams, whether that's increasing local taxes or whatever it may be. Those things combined with, you know, we'll, I'm sure get into a pension discussion before too long, the pension numbers are ugly, to say the least. The pension numbers are, if the state could go bankrupt, the pensions will bankrupt the state. They're certainly going to do that to municipalities simply because the contribution rates just don't work. It's certainly a benefit that, you know, a lot of these gentlemen behind us in, it worked for, it's part of the job, it's, but at the end of the day, and I'm sympathetic to them, and I'm lucky enough to have a defined benefit pension plan where I work, which is rare, and that's why it's rare, is because the costs simply don't work. And with the increases that we will be seeing over the next two years, four years, five years, it simply gets worse, and there has to be a solution to it because municipality simply cannot afford it. municipality simply cannot afford it.
And one thing from, from my perspective, as administrator perspective, I think that's gospel, we have to pay it from the, the state law and stuff that I know.
I would agree.
So you're always gonna see that included in, in the budget, uh, from me. So as, that's why I pointed out that we have to, to cover that expense and I, I can't ignore it.
Whether we agree with, and I know Commissioner Decker and, and I've talked with Commissioner Call about this and, uh, uh, you know, there's some sentiment for, uh, backing that down because, you know, we, we feel that the state will have to correct it at some point, and they will, but until that day, I don't think it's fiscally responsible to pay less because, you know, if we do, say we do that for five years and there's no colle- and there's no correction on the state's, uh, behalf, uh, we will be obligated at some point to write a really large check that we don't have the money for.
Yep.
So, uh, I think it's one of those things that we need to, um, adhere to the projections and pay, uh, in the meantime, but there will have to be a fix on the state level because it's, it's bankrupting the state and it's going to bankrupt municipalities and we're there.
The, the thing I think, in my view and, and looking at this, I mean, the percentages of how much is funded, the public looks at the big picture, the big headlines and say that we're all short of paying in and that's not true in that East Peoria has done well and we're paying out less than we're taking in. I think that's a fact, is it not, as far as the benefits?
That's true.
Well, we were gaining ground until the actuarial projections changed.
Oh, yeah, they changed the, the target. You know, we're, we're around fifty percent or there, you know, Chicago's at ten percent.
We're still paying more in than what we're expending to retirees.
Correct.
And that's interesting. We, the city of East Peoria, speaking with one of our pension people today, the city of East Peoria has always, always done what the actuary suggests. And that's troubling to think that we've always done what we're supposed to do, but yet our percentage number has dropped. And to your point, we, um, we bring in more money than what we pay out, but yet the, the, uh, that unfunded liabilities number, uh, has increased, what's unfunded. And that, that is troubling because we've always known what we're supposed to do. I mean, the, the city of East Peoria, uh, this council, previous councils have always done what they're supposed to do and, um, now these numbers are out there and it's troubling. Dennis, I have a question for you, uh, to Commissioner Densberger's point. As we continue to pay, um, the pension payments, whether it be police and fire pensions along the way, is there a fear someday that we do our part, we do what we're supposed to do? Can the state or would it be something that we would have to be fearful of somehow combine the pensions in legislation so therefore the, the residents of East Peoria has done, have done our jobs, but yet other communities have not? Does, is that something to fear? Do we have to worry about the combination of the pensions throughout the state?
I'm not sure Commissioner or anybody knows the answer to that, but the best I could do would, would be to say that, uh, sort of falls in the category of anything with, is possible. I think it'd give rise to a constitutional crisis. I think it'd be very draconian, uh, but is it possible? Yes. Should you have anxiety about that? Yeah, a little bit, which means we need to follow what goes on in Springfield and try to make sure that, uh, what you're really saying, those, those who made a larger effort are penalized because you're thrown in the hopper with people who didn't make a good effort. So, yeah, I think, I think that's possible, um, but I, without analyzing it more carefully, I think it's probably a constitutional crisis, meaning that it might, might actually require, um, some modification of the constitution to get to that point.
Okay.
You know, I'll, uh, this is somewhat beside the point, but I think it illustrates things fairly well. Uh, Mr. Becker and I had a conversation last week and we looked at, uh, the city's, the various funds that the city levied for on property taxes last year. And at least in my opinion, arguably the three, uh, three of the biggest political problems in Illinois are property tax rates, uh, public pensions and workers' compensation. And the ironic thing is that if we levied only for, uh, our three public pensions and workers' comp and levied the amounts that we need to pay those, every dime of our property tax would roughly cover it. So basically our property taxes go for nothing more in this city but to pay the public pensions and workers' comp.
It, it probably doesn't make any difference, but, but part of the history here is life expectancy and actuariales are, are running these numbers, finding the people are living longer, which is a good thing, uh, but it has a enormous impact. Then you add in that they made some very poor assumptions early on as to the rate of return on investments.
And let me reiterate one thing when I talk about pensions. I'm not expressing an opinion, uh, that anyone doesn't deserve the pension that they've worked for. That's not the point. The point is the numbers don't work and the state and municipalities can't afford it.
I have, um, a couple of questions before we go toward revenue. Uh, you and I were speaking today and I'm not, I, I've been trying to think of the answer all afternoon. The M F T funds, Jeff, do you know, how are our M F T dollars determined? Is it off of our population?
Yes.
Okay. Cause there was a, a pretty dramatic decrease, I wanna say around two thousand ten or so or two thousand twelve in that area, if I remember correctly. Is it also determined off of the price of fuel?
Uh, I can check to see what goes into it, but what we get out of the pot is based on population. What the state decides to put in.
Might be based off price.
I'm sure.
I believe it's pennies per gallon is what they add to it. You know, whether it's ten cents.
Tax per gallon.
It's taxed per gallon, so it's not necessarily off price. So the higher the price goes, they don't get more tax. It's, it's not a percentage basis, it's pennies per gallon.
My other question is, when you mentioned consolidation of dispatch, on one hand, that concerns me. I know how good our dispatchers are and I wanna make sure that, that we continue to have that level of competency. On the other hand, you mentioned that in the future, there could be a decrease of obligation, financial obligation. Have you looked at what that could look like? Are we talking about fifty thousand, a half million, I mean, any idea?
I think talking to the chief, it could be in that fifty to a hundred thousand dollar range.
Okay.
On an annual basis. Depends on how much staff we have to hire back for clerks, because we're gonna have to hire a clerk's position to do, uh, records where the dispatchers currently do records for us. You know, when we go to the consolidated dispatch, uh, you know, that service is not provided by the dispatcher, so, um, we have not gotten into all those costs, but we believe there'll be a little savings probably in that fifty to a hundred thousand dollar range.
Any word recently on when that's going to occur, the consolidation effort?
I'd have to ask the chief.
It has to happen by mid nineteen.
I think, I think I can answer that, Dan. There was a, uh, conference call today with attorneys from all the municipalities in the county discussing that, that issue, uh, because in order to get the consolidation, to get a plan approved, which is supposed to happen by October first of this year, about a month from now, there needs to be an intergovernmental agreement. There needs to be bylaws for a new entity to be created. So there, there's a process to go through and with this mandated deadline of October first, uh, we need some cooperation from a whole lot of, of, uh, public entities, the county and four major municipalities in, in the county. And based upon, um, a conversation today, we might get there. Otherwise, um, we'll be in, we won't meet the ti- the deadline and we'll be in violation and I expect that there'll be some leniency because we're trying hard. But until that, until the formula's worked out as to how the respective allocation, how, how the costs are gonna be allocated among Pekin, Washington, East Peoria, Morton and Tazewell County, meaning the sheriff's department, uh, it's very hard to come up with solid numbers. And even as, even as you do that, um, you have to, um, make some educated guesses as to, uh, whether or not there can be change in the total number of personnel. In other words, will there be an economy of scale? So, the, um, short answer is, supposed to have a plan by October first, it's supposed to be implemented, uh, by then two thousand nineteen and, um, we'll come close, I think. Uh, the consequences of not doing that, at least, um, in theory, is that the state, um, uh, emergencies, E, E, E T S B, emergency telephones, safety board at the state level can withhold funds from Tazewell County. So there's not a motivation to get it done, but we're, we're farther along than a lot of places.
The, the good thing is from a, a budget standpoint, that's not necessarily gonna impact next year's budget from an operation standpoint. If they get into the construction phase and we have to kick in some capital, that's where it could impact us, uh, sooner than the, the October of nineteen timeframe. I hope it doesn't come to that, but it, it very much could.
Do we currently have thirteen dispatchers? Is that correct? Chief, do you know?
That's, that would be the entire topic. We have everybody hired, positioned, we have twelve dispatchers and a telecommunications manager.
Okay. So, we, we have at least one, we have a couple of people in training to fill those spots and I believe there's another new one in High Plains, so, um, it'd either take us to that eleventh or the twelfth spot if they all make it, make it through. And that is a really rigorous, um, amount of training that they go through, so, um, it's not guaranteed that everybody that's, goes in that training program gets through.
Chief, isn't, Morton's been already selected to be the site, is that true?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're at least that far along and that part is settled, if you will, so we're, we're on our way, we have been for some time.
Yeah, we are, I think considerably farther along than many, like, communities around the state, so, I, I think once these agreements get in place, I think you're gonna then really see the, the balls start rolling and the, the nuts and bolts really start to come together then.
They've already had the plans put together, it's just a function of what Dennis was saying.
Yeah.
That's the next step is to get everybody on board on the same page. They're actually forming a separate board that will oversee this, both from an operation and a personnel.
But we've done all we can do at this point.
You just signed a conference memo on that or the attorneys did?
Yep.
Are you heading towards revenue now on your presentation?
Yeah, I am heading towards the, um, you know, we've talked about what our current revenues are, what our current expenditures are. As a, like I said, as a non-home rule rep, uh, community, we don't have a, a lot of the control over a whole bunch of revenue sources. I list a few in, uh, in my memo. Sales tax is, uh, the biggest one here. A half cent sales tax, if council wants to go that direction, would raise. I believe a little more than two point five, I was using a two point five budget figure, for that. The second one would be, uh, currently we do not charge for garbage services. Almost every municipality charges us for garbage services. I chose a, a ten dollar a month, uh, number, uh, ninety-three hundred customers, it would generate a little over one point one million. Talking to most of my peers that do it municipally, uh, the true break even of a garbage service is somewhere, you know, between sixteen and eighteen dollars a month per customer. That's if you put all your overhead and, and stuff in it.
Historically, we've covered that under property taxes. And I know last budget year, you shifted that under sales tax. Just curious, that ninety-three hundred customers, that's a different number than we used when we went through our little exercise about a year and a half ago. Where did we come up with that?
That was given to me by, uh, Public Works, they actually counted stops. As you know, we're implementing RouteSmart, uh, technologies to, uh, develop better routing network for our garbage. That's the number that's in there. They've actually got the current route and it's, it may be ninety-two, twenty-eight or ninety-two, you know, eighty, um, because not every customer puts out a garbage can every week.
Right.
Somebody could be out of, out of town or something like that, so.
Okay.
We've had to use, you know, do it a couple of different times and, and massage the numbers just a little bit, but that's if everybody would put it out. And I'll go through these in a little more detail in, in just a minute. The other one would be, uh, property tax increase. It looks like, uh, Jeff, the, uh, we could increase about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for next year. We just got the, uh, tax extensions, so.
That was based on P T L.
Based on P T L. And then due to the, the state's tax code, we could collect additional for the fire pension fund of about three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. And if you look, that's actually coming out of the actuarial charts. That's by, in the state law that says we could do that. The, those are the, the short-term ones. We could talk about, um, building, uh, permit fees. We could talk about, um, fees in, in Public Works for water tapping and some of those, but those are, um, really small in the grand scheme of, uh, revenue generation. Do we need to do that? Yes, we do, uh, to keep those, um, in line with the, the services we provide for those, but they're not large, um, revenue generators by any means, so I've chosen to leave them off of this discussion because, um, we're just simply not building enough houses or commercial properties to generate, you know, an additional hundred thousand dollars by raising, simply raising a few fees. We'd be talking, you know, five or ten thousand dollars in that category by raising some of the fees. And that's if we, just because they don't generate a lot of money through those fees. Then the last category left on here is, uh, the possibility of looking to home rule, and home rule taxes and having that discussion, but I'm gonna say that's not a short-term solution. That takes a referendum at this point, uh, to pass or getting us above twenty-five thousand of population. We're not seeing an influx of population building of houses to get to the twenty-five thousand, so referendums are only option at this point in time. It would take, next election's what, two years away, uh, and then it would take time after that to put in place, so that really comes too late before I've got to, or we as a council, uh, have to, uh, balance the budget for next year. So, um, I think it's a good thing to look at, I think we should discuss it, but as far as next year's budget or even maybe the following year's budget after that, it would have no impact. I did produce memos on sales tax, um, it's a one-pager in here, um, talking about, you have the option of going in twenty-five percent increments, quarter percent increments. Currently, the, we have a one point two five general, um, non-home rule sales tax on, on the books, um, that, that covers all taxing bodies. We do have three business districts that have either a half percent or a full percent on there. I also then compared, uh, that to what other communities are doing, uh, Peoria, Pekin, Morton, Washington, um, to see where we could go with that. The talk has been looking at a, a half percent increase. If you did that, your general rate would be eight and a half from eight today and your top, uh, business districts would be paying nine and a half, uh, percent, uh, in those business districts. Peoria, their general rate's nine percent right now. They do have that hotel improvement zone that pays ten.
That's very limited, though.
Yes, it is. Pekin's at eight and a half, Morton, uh, again, a non-home rule community, they don't have the, the non-home rule sales tax we do, so they're just at the state rate of six point seven five. They do have a downtown business district that adds another cent to that, um, but that, I don't believe that reaches out to their main retail corridor. And then Washington has a, a percent and a quarter on there for, uh, at eight percent.
Something that's interesting, I, the county public safety tax, we've talked about that quite a bit, it's a, a touchy subject. But I notice in Morton, the downtown business district, why is that?
That's an error.
Misprint?
That's a misprint. The Morton should be over in the, uh, should be in the business district.
Okay.
Thank you for catching that.
I was just surprised.
Surprised it hasn't been pointed to me because I shared this with a number of people and, um, because they do not have that home rule.
Peoria also has a restaurant tax as their home.
Peoria has home rules, so they have a whole litany of restaurant taxes and other taxes, entertainment taxes and so forth that.
This is the general retail.
Hotel, restaurant and amusement tax.
This is the general retail, like what we have, so, because we don't have the others, so.
The, um, the county public safety tax is something I pointed to Commissioner Call's paper when I saw that. It's, um, touchy because, uh, that was put in place for the purpose of building the jail. And, uh, then obviously with the new jail, we will have new expenses, but the, the total tax was left in place and to me that's, um, I, I wish that, uh, that would somehow come back to the communities.
So, and, and obviously Peoria doesn't have that tax.
Now that the jail's been paid for, paid off.
Long time ago.
Long time ago.
On this one, they, uh, we do have some dates that we have to be aware of if we wanna go to this route. If the city wants to start a sales tax increase, um, January one, uh, the state only starts it two, twice a year, January one and July one of the year, uh, we have to. a year, January 1 and July 1 of the year, we have to let the state know by October 1 we're gonna increase that. So we do have some time deadline, if we want that to start January 1. So it would take council action here in September if that's where we're gonna go.
You know, big concern I have, obviously, I'm opposed to raising the tax, but just on face value, when you tie it back into our declining revenues, sales tax is flat, if not, it's gone down somewhat. You know, to tack on additional half a percent, obviously, online shopping's had an impact.
It's had a big impact.
But I'm just opposed to dumping this on the taxpayers, quite honestly, and my concern is you're gonna continue to see that decline. And I realize the argument is, well, you know, it's only an additional 50 cents or this or that, people are tapped out. You know, we talked about the state earlier, the state's broken, they fixed nothing. Yeah, they passed a budget to pay their bills and they rob Peter to pay Paul, nothing's fixed, nothing changes. And here we are having a discussion, because now we're short, no matter how we got here, fact is, we're short. And I just, I see that, no different than I see the income tax, you're gonna see a decline. Corporate tax rate went up to 7%, you think businesses are gonna stay here? No, they're done. Things are checking out, and I think for us, to put the businesses that have a vested interest here, wanna be here, wanna do the right thing, to dump it on their backs and put them in a disadvantage, you know, we can compare surrounding communities till the cows come home, but I'm just, that's something I'm not interested in doing, just putting that on the record.
So that means you're for the other that we haven't got to yet?
No.
I mean.
I'm not done there.
That's fine.
There's areas I think we can control costs, that we don't do a good job of.
So, like I said, that's one of the areas that we do have here. Obviously, we would, we would jump to the, you know, pretty well the top rate in our business districts in the area for our retail shopping, from a sales tax perspective. I will need to know rather soon which direction council wants to go on that, so we can put that before a vote if we're, feel like we've got the votes to implement that here in September to notify the state come January 1. Otherwise, we'll have another option to do it, a little later date, July 1.
A question, Jeff, just for one item, and you've alluded to it really. Peoria, of course, is home rule, they have a motor fuel tax, correct?
Correct.
Pekin is home rule, they have a motor fuel tax.
Correct.
Washington has a motor fuel tax.
Correct.
So we're at a disadvantage in that way, in that we can't do, we don't do that.
Can't do.
So, our sales tax, this is retail, but our gasoline is cheaper, so we, we're not just dumping on our own people, we're here trying to balance the books for what we're accountable for. And so, if, you know, if we had some of these other advantages, which we don't, but we don't have that in our toolbox, these other communities, it's all, what's it cost to live in this community? And it, whether it's, it's all the costs, and I think we look at that as a whole and try to do our business for what we need to do for our town, in my view.
So, I'm gonna go on to the next item here, and that's the solid waste fee. We've talked about this one before as well. We do have that option, like I said, every municipality around us has a fee for solid waste collection. This would be solid waste and recycling. Currently, we have about an $800,000 operation budget for recycling, and no separate capital budget, so typically, the garbage trucks have been paid for out of gaming dollars, so they've been, in addition to that $800,000 that kind of you use for the operation of the solid waste, that's the labor it takes to pick it up, that's the maintenance on the garbage trucks, also all our tipping fees. The idea here would be to move solid waste towards an enterprise fund, where it does have its own revenue, much like water and sewer here. What I've done is, you know, look at what it takes to establish that, what we would need equipment-wise in the next few years to do it in a professional manner. You know, we've bought two new garbage trucks two and a half years ago, our recycling trucks are older than that, and really at the, getting towards the end of their life cycle. So what I had said is, let's do two things. Number one, let's put in a mandatory recycling program where everybody gets a toter for recycling, to try to increase the amount of materials we're recycling, because it's simply much cheaper for us to collect recycling, the tipping fees are much cheaper than they are for solid waste. And anything we can move from the solid waste line to recycling will be a cost reduction to us. There's proven facts out there by some of the big waste haulers that if you put a large toter out in front of everybody, you'll get a significant bump in the amount of material recycled. People don't use the small, they'll use the small toters, but, or hand containers, but they use the big toters to much more degree. Secondly, I essentially, as I was looking at a budget, said we're gonna put our trucks on a five-year rotation and buy a truck every year, and have five trucks in the fleet, four frontline trucks and a reserve truck, and put them on a five-year rotation. Talking to some of the bigger waste haulers, Waste Management being one of them, they typically use a seven to 10-year life cycle, inching towards the seven-year life cycle on most of their garbage trucks. So we could tweak this a little bit, the price I used is what we paid for the last armed truck, and depending on the options we get, it could be slightly above that number. I also just chose a fee of $10 a month, knowing it was a new fee that we were instituting, also knowing that most other communities charge a higher fee than that. And I truly believe it takes a little bit more than that to pay 100% of the cost it takes to operate a enterprise fund for solid waste.
See, that's the concern I have with this, the way you have it laid out, too, enterprise fund should be self-sufficient, so the way these numbers are ran, there's still gonna be a shortfall, which is still gonna require money coming out of the general fund.
Mm-hmm. You know, the option there would be, we could, we could set that at $15 a month per customer, and.
So are we talking yard waste as well?
No, I was not talking yard waste, this is solid waste and recycling. Even with running it as a deficit, it would free up a little more than a half million dollars on an annual basis to the general fund that's currently going into solid waste.
Is yard waste a consideration?
I didn't take it into it, 'cause typically yard waste is a summertime thing, it's harder to, it's not a year-round activity, so how do you staff up for the summertime and staff down for that, and I have no data on how many people use yard waste, I would want that surface at this point in time, I didn't have enough data to even consider it.
It'd be an additional service that people could take advantage of.
It'd be an additional cost for us as well to collect. That one's a much harder one for me to get my arms around to give good numbers with. I know Waste Management collects it, I don't know how much they do for it on a monthly basis, so we would have to charge a similar amount and probably contract with a third-party provider to do that, instead of trying to do it ourselves, just because we can't staff up for the summer and staff back down.
I wouldn't think it'd be similar, from the sense that we're paying for their equipment and everything, we've already got the equipment that we've bought and paid for.
But if they're used on the main routes for garbage and recycling.
But if you did it every other week, versus every week.
It's much more sellable.
If you went through a toter system, similar to what we're discussing on recycling.
But what would you do on the winter months when you don't have yard waste? You know, it's just, I didn't have enough data to put that together.
That's fine, Jeff, I was just asking, I didn't see it listed.
But if you, but still, it's something extra people be getting versus the same services for more money.
Right, that's kinda what I was getting at, I guess.
I do understand that point, but it's a little harder.
But it's what percentage, 10% of the population, 20?, I don't know. And if you make it free, then you're gonna, more people would use it, you know? If you're paying for it, I think you see.
Nothing's free, Tim. People pay taxes, man.
Well, but.
Trust me, $6,300 a year, my street hasn't been touched in 13 years, I don't live in a brick house, I don't live in a 2,000 square foot house. That's my point, don't sit there and act like they're getting a free service, there's not one thing that we offer that's free.
John, it's, it's not an entitlement at this point, we don't do it, we don't pay for it now.
You'd say it's an entitlement.
We're looking at a $2 million budget deficit, and we're wanting to add things, I think it's worth looking at the cost, but let's continue on, I think, I would consider it, but it's the big picture of the whole thing, and I, you know, I don't use, I don't need to bag up my yard waste, I take care of my own, but that's the situation I'm in, not everyone's like that, but.
So it's a possibility.
It's a possibility, it all depends that you wanna go, I left recycling here as a weekly recycling activity, instead of going bi-weekly, many communities that do toters, the large toters do a bi-weekly recycling, that is an option. I had to start somewhere, as I put this together.
Understand.
And we can go from there. We already talked briefly about the property tax increase, that's just a number that comes from our tax base, as well as the additional for fire, so, you know, what I'm looking for is, you know, some direction to go for in the future. There is one other option, if we don't want to go with increases in revenue, is we can continue to look for areas to cut. The largest expenditure the city has, much like all other cities, is our labor force, especially in the general fund category. It becomes very difficult to take a, you know, $250,000, $500,000 out of the budget unless you eliminate personnel. And I can't do that at this point in time, because many of our departments are very thin on the personnel front, where we're incurring a lot of overtime to operate some of the departments due to injuries, due to vacations, to provide the level of service that everybody is currently comfortable with. Going back to the strategic planning with Lisle Summit, if we wanna look at that, we can have a large discussion on what are, what are our core services that we wanna provide here in East Peoria? And then, what does it take from a revenue side to support those core services? We can go through a large exercise on that, and it'll take us a significant amount of time for myself, Jeff, and Jeff working with all the departments to put all those numbers together, but we can do that.
Jeff, I wanna ask you about one thing, I have a note here, and I know we spoke about it earlier today. We used to speak about it a couple of years ago, Tom Brynberry brought it up, it was the stormwater utility fee.
Yes.
And for those that don't know, it, the idea, what some other communities have done, is put together a group of people from the community that would get together and look at how it should be implemented. And what this is, is it's the understanding that the water that is on your property has to go someplace. Where it goes many times causes damage. Last year, for example, I think the city of East Peoria spent a half a million dollars, is that right? Right around there?
It's right around that number, it's, again, in the street department, they're doing street stuff and they maintain our storm system, but it was just more maintenance stuff and emergency type projects, they're not doing anything really preventative at this point in time.
It comes out of Public Works budget.
Yes, comes out of Public Works budget, it's erosion control, it's when, you know, the water is no longer controlled, there's enough going down a road, then it goes up over a sidewalk, gets into someone's yard, starts washing out their yard. If it's the responsibility of the city, we have to maintain that, we have to take care of it. I believe last year, our expenses were somewhere around a half million dollars.
We did spend the half million for the cleanout of the.
That's right.
The levy alone, that doesn't, didn't include the other stuff that Public Works staff normally does, like I said, maintaining the drainage ways.
What some communities have done, I believe Morton's one of them.
Yes.
But I'm not sure, I think Morton's one, they put together a community group who studies how it should be implemented, and then they come with a recommendation to the city council. This was discussed a couple of years ago, but just has not occurred. I think it's something we need to consider as well. Many people and their homes, your normal residence wouldn't cause much of a stormwater runoff problem, but some of the larger contributors with large parking lots and things may cause more of a water runoff issue. We know far too well in East Peoria what some of our erosion can occur, and all the things that the city has taken care of over the last few years does not compare to the many problems that are out there that we just have not had the finances to take care of. So right now, we are only taking care of them on a, on an emergency basis. But if we look at all the different possibilities, we talked about sales tax, property tax, and garbage fee and everything else, this is something that we can look at, is, it is a fee, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, it is, but the way that Morton did it, I believe, was put it in the, onto the place that it should be placed, so it's something that I would like us to at least consider to look at.
You mean a separate line item on the bill, you mean?
I'm not sure how they do it.
I think that's how they do it.
Most people that have stormwater utility fees, it comes as a separate line item on your water sewer bill. Now, obviously, we have some areas of town that don't have our water and don't necessarily have our sewer, that we have to make a provision for collecting that, but we could work with those providers to get that done. Most communities, and I'm talking to Steve, come up with a single value for the residential, the single-family type residential units, and call that one fee, and then get more into specifics on lot area coverage, and the fees for that, for your larger commercial developments that have, I'll just take the Levy District here and the development across the street out in front of Target. Target's got a big building that's impervious, they have a huge parking lot around them that's impervious, so they're creating more of a stormwater issue than, say, your single-family house where you've only got a, of your lot, you've got 25% of your lot is covered in impervious surface, where their lot is 95% covered in impervious surface, and it's much larger as well. So they come up with a different calculation or rationale to deal with those.
And a lot, a lot of cases, it will cause businesses to become maybe greener, or at least come up with ways to control their runoff, as a way maybe to save money in the future, because all these, all this stormwater that is created, all the runoff, the city is forced to deal with the effects of it, and I know this far too well, because it does come out of the Public Works budget.
So, yeah, that is another option. I really wasn't thinking along those lines when I was originally putting this together. Again, I don't think, that could help offset some of our budget needs, but it wasn't one that got us completely to where we need to go, especially with the huge capital needs that some of the stormwater projects that could take place would need.
If I remember correctly, I believe it took Morton around a year or so to look, to form the committee and go through the steps of making sure that the community group made the right decision, so it's nothing that's short-term.
Yeah.
They have quite interesting formulas, I've seen them, you know, how they assess them, it's been in place, it's $5 a month, $10 a month, it could be more than that for the large, large footprint customers, but the EPA gets mandate, you know, there's mandates coming in for that. You can say, well, we can get by with not doing it, but you really have to fix it.
And it's really on a national forefront right now, as we're experiencing a very real natural disaster in Texas right now, due to the hurricane and the flooding. due to the hurricane and the flooding. A lot of that is because they didn't predict that much rain, but especially in Houston with their zoning code and their building codes, the way they are, or lack thereof, has caused some of their problems, so.
Something we can look at in the future, but for right now.
Definitely look at in the future.
Yeah, actually, Commissioner, this is Mr. Livingston and I talked about this yesterday, and I sent Mr. Reader an email about it earlier, I think it is something we need to look at, but I don't believe it's something that will have the impact of many of the other proposals he's got on the table. But I, I would agree that we need to take a very hard look at it.
Let's move on, Jeff, where you're at.
So, I'm really, you know, at the end, you've heard both sides of expenses, revenues, we've gone over the possibilities. At this point in time, I'm looking for a direction from the commission on where you want me to go with the budget next year. Do I have permission to move forward with putting a sales tax before you either here in the next week, to get it done in September so we can start it in January? Or are we gonna hold that discussion or thought off and, and maybe look at a next July start date, if that's where we wanna go? Or we're not gonna look at any additional revenues and you want me to get very creative and look at where I can cut dollars and not spend funds in every department? And it would take, and I'm not sure I could cut that much out of the budget without having some very serious discussions with council on service levels, expectation of service levels.
I think that's something we need to do, you know, regardless, but the fact is that, I don't think you're gonna get a decision on this tonight. It might, that will merit more consideration in the future, probably more meetings like this.
A question or a comment, I think we could maybe have some kind of consensus, maybe, I don't know, I haven't heard it all yet. Going back to our strategic planning, I, I think we need to go back there where we spent a week together. And, and one of the things that we, and we talked about this in Budget Time and back in April, and this is not new to any of us, this is all, we've known exactly about this, all we know now is the state's taking more and more money out of what used to be ours, okay? Bottom line, we're learning we're in worse condition than we were four or five months ago. But one, one of the things that we mentioned was a financial reserve policy.
Yes.
And if we don't, if we ignore that, that, that has some implications too, and we discussed that back in, in May. And I, I think that's part of it, really, a lot of what we do and why. And why do you, if, if we had five, six million dollars in reserves, we could float through part of this and not have to be making some of these tougher decisions. But we don't have, we have, you have eight hundred thousand dollars in there, okay, that's about a week's payroll.
That's, that's one payroll.
One payroll.
Not, yeah, one payroll is just a little less than that.
I mean, it is zero, and, and we, you know, we're not broke in that way, but yet we don't have millions of dollars just sitting around just trying to figure out a way to spend it.
Yeah, and you look at any one time at our, our cash that we have on hand, you know, right now, we're getting to the, the time of year where we actually have a lot of cash on hand, but it's all over in the bond payment accounts, because we have our bond, our major bond payments are all in December. So we are setting money aside as it comes in to make those payments.
So my, my view is that it's imperative that we, we look at the, what's our goals here? What's our initiatives, our, our, our purpose statement here? Is it to build reserves, I'd say yes it is, at what rate? Others, we should set a goal, what we want for reserves. And any income increase that we, if we decide on an, an increase in revenue, that, hey, a portion will be in for reserves, no doubt about it. We're not just gonna spend everything we take in, if, if it comes to that. And we discussed that back in May, so I, I think we just can't kick this down another six months, year, I mean, we've got a year and a half left on this term, and our term's over. I think we've, we've got a pretty good idea here, real good idea what's going on and why, and so let's just face it and make a decision, and I guess not to decide as a decision.
That is, that is an option, it's always an option.
I think that's our, our job to make a decision.
And if everyone wants to take some time and, and individually get back to me on, on at least the sales tax, if we wanna see that go forward in January, I need to, to get that in front of council to take action.
Okay, when's the deadline, Jeff, as far as?
We have to notify the state by October one, which basically means I need to put it on next week's agenda for two readings, because we only have two meetings in September.
Dennis, can we have one reading on that, if we had two?
I don't know why.
Just give an extra week, but I.
Or we can always call a special meeting, but we've got it.
If there's three people who are, are favored that, that's, that's fine, you can find that out now.
But Mayor, I mean, this, we know that the number of dollars we need, at least projections from Jeff, and Jeff's what we hired him for. If there's, if, if there is revenue, we, we can proceed on, we can break even and maybe not fall behind. But if we don't adapt something, adopt something for additional revenue, we haven't discussed the other options, which is reducing costs.
That's right.
Equal to what we're short. So I'm, I'm open to a proposal besides what I've seen here, how we're gonna get a million and a half, one point three for next year, and then the year after that, you know, we're not spending on roads, we're not spending any capital money on anything next year. If we stay the way we are, that's not acceptable.
The only thing that it would left in the budget, because I use this year's budget as base, would be the, the value of the five squad cars that we bought in the current year's budget, because that was the only quote capital item we had in there. So I started with that staying in, but that's not a huge dollar figure.
No, and when you look at the other, every department needs, and you list it out, whether it's an ambulance, or garbage truck, or plow truck, or.
And I didn't list them all out, I was trying to give examples for, for every.
We're looking at bridge repair, two and a half to five million dollars in the next two to three years, and look, you, you just put that off, you just, what are you gonna do? How are you gonna make it up? You know, we, we.
Probably the same way we pay for the E R I, Tim.
Well, John, we got criticized for not having enough reserves, and we got criticized for not having enough money in the bank to pay for the sewer project, and now we're wanting to put money in, in the bank to pay for these things in the future.
And we don't have the money.
Just the same.
And we don't have the money, that's why we're having this discussion. And the answer that I hear you saying is, let's go tap somebody else for it.
The reason.
You wanna talk about controlling costs? I've asked about controlling costs for two and a half years. I started this discussion openly back in December. Do you know what we spend in legal bills alone, and I'm not slighting Dennis Triggs, or Miller Hall and Triggs here? Do you know what, from January to July, what have we spent this year alone? Do you know?
Nope, not.
Four hundred and twelve thousand some dollars.
Correct, okay, I, I buy it.
So roughly seven to, seven hundred thousand to a million a year.
Do you know why we spend that much?
The, the reduction of that.
Yeah, actually, I do, and I, I don't care to disclose it here. But my, my point is, there's ways that we can look at how we're spending money, and I think we can do a much better job.
If we, if we were to toss out Miller Hall and Triggs, we're still two million short, John.
Well, two point seven million, based on a decision that you made.
That's not in here either.
That isn't, that is not a total deficit number, John, that number breaks even with the cost that we're saving, so don't tell us that.
All right, we, we, that is not in here as far as the percentage that you were estimating to decrease in the attorney fees, Jeff?
I did not get into that, all I was presenting, you know, we, if we wanna go and look at all the departments and the services, you know, there are reasons for, for a lot of those fees, and I've had conversations with Dennis about those fees, that we are aware that, where those fees are at and trying to, to reduce them, but there's lots of factors that go into.
And I'm not discounting Dennis, and I hope you understand that. When you're asked to do something, you should be paid to do it. Don't misunderstand where I'm going with that.
Actually, I, I don't misunderstand, it discusses with Administrator Reader, we are sitting down, go through the bills, and try to find ways in which we can use legal services less. Furthermore, I'm requiring every attorney in, in the firm to make suggestions as how we can provide needed services, but overall, spend less money, we, we need to be part of the solution, period.
No, that would be just part of it, but it's, it's gonna be very difficult to reduce expenditures without having serious discussions on a level of services within all departments.
So basically, it's reducing services.
That's, from what I see, you're reducing services.
If we don't balance the book, it's reducing services, that's the only way we can do it. And I'm open to hearing the reductions that would get us there.
And, and, and what I'm talking about here, this gets us back to the level of capital spending we have currently in the current budget. That doesn't get us to where we actually have money to spend on capital items, on roads, a new fire truck, whatever that may be. You have to cut more than the number to, to have a true capital.
You're looking at just five years, Jeff, and so we're beyond, you know, the life of the city, we go well beyond five years, we're looking at just five, and we're two and a half short, two and a half million. Percentage of our budget, that's, that's significant. And it's doable, we have within our means to, we're, we're here stewards to manage what needs to be done to main, I believe the mandate to maintain our services, the best cost. And, you know, I, it's awful easy to say, well, we'll just cut costs. Well, we can turn all the lights off and, and we can save some money that way, and we can lay off a third of our administrative staff in the city ranks.
It's not about layoffs or cutoffs, and that's something, that is something I will not support, any story.
John, what do you support, tell me what, which way you wanna go?
You wanna meet and have a discussion, I'll tell you what.
This is open, this is open.
Okay, this is open. So, explain to me, let's go back and revisit, you talked about the strategic planning, which was very fruitful.
Sure.
But at the end of the day, there's a cost of doing that. A lot of what we're seeing here is designed around sticking with a strategic plan. Things have changed, so let's have that conversation. You talked about reserves, for ten years that you've sat on this council, what have you done to build reserves?
I don't think we need to be accusatory, I think we have a solution.
It's a fact.
The vote has a hole in it, and we gotta figure out how to plug it and blame it isn't gonna work.
And I understand that.
Please.
It's a fact, so to sit there and say now, we need to generate additional revenues to build the reserves, my point is, if we don't have the money, we don't have the money.
That's right.
That's all I'm getting at, so maybe we have to have a different conversation if this is designed around a strategic plan, and maybe we need to go back to the board.
In my view, in my view, a strategic plan that we spent a week together on, and it's, it's a, it's a moving target in a way, but it's a, to me, it's a bedrock of your, where your goals are where you wanna be. And I, I think we need to be looking at having reserves in our city budget. We made the decision back, early days of my time here, to spend an extra million dollars out of reserves for street repair, because we felt it was, we were short on maintaining streets, and we did that. Now, what has happened is, is we all see the charts, most of us see the charts, gaming's down a couple million dollars, and we're down a million three on real estate levy expenses. The state hit us with an extra million dollars with pension costs that went up that weren't, that weren't on this, they just changed the graph on us. That's unavoidable, unavoidable for us, those things.
Tim, what are you saying as far as, where are you gonna get reserves? What do you wanna, what is it that you wanna do to raise reserves?
I am saying that any plan that we have that would raise revenue, let's say sales tax is one, that a percentage of that would be dedicated to reserves.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying, is that it would not just all be spent to buy a new truck, or, or just new things, but we would, this all becomes a budget priority of the departments. And I, I think reserves do a long, if, if we had stronger reserves now, we, we would have kicked it down the road another six months, I don't think we can do that. I think we need to adjust, address the issue we have, and don't just put it off, put it off, because I, I wanna know what, Jeff's, we've, Jeff's given us a blueprint of which way to go here. If there are other people that wanna give additional input, that's fine. I have ideas too, but I, I, I know what Jeff has, and it's either these revenue enhancers, the sales tax is the only one that really covers the bills. The garbage fee is, yeah, it raises a million dollars, it would cover, you know, there's an area where if we spent the money to buy an additional truck, we could probably reduce manpower by one and have a more efficient, that's productivity, that is where I see a city saving money in productivity by increasing better equipment, we've done that already in Public Works. So maybe we could find a way to finance that new truck away from the general budget, because anything we spend now on garbage trucks or that sort of thing does not, it's, it's erosion control, half million, that does not go in the roads. And we're saying we need two million dollars a year on streets, and all we've got, six hundred thousand on motor fuel. Public's not gonna live with that very long, and you're gonna come back and we're gonna come back and say, well, it's your fault, you didn't, we're going in this with our eyes wide open. You just can't keep kicking it down and saying, well, we'll figure it out later, we'll figure it out later, we can't do that.
Commissioner Collin, are you saying that we should develop a strategic plan as far as addressing this specifically?
I go back into, you know, and I know he doesn't wanna hear it, and it may not meet his goal there of this shortfall that he's projecting, but this plan, what we've been presented, is based off the strategic plan, which includes building reserves. We never should have.
So what's your alternative that you wanna propose?
I go back into looking at controlling costs, we talk about legal bills. I've asked for a list of credit cards, what the limits are, who oversees how those are handled, how purchasing's done, who spends what? You know, we talked about, Commissioner Densberger brought up the pension, I reached out to the pension board, I looked at the pension law. You know, at the end of the day, if the city doesn't have the amount based off, you know, whatever that increase is, we, we don't have it. You know, is that something we can go back and have a conversation? Do we have to put in two point one million, can we put in a million this year? And you kinda piqued my interest in having those conversations based on your comments back in December. And it's something to have a serious discussion about. You know, I, the option of cuts in services and whatever, if we wanna have a discussion about the types of services we offer as a city across the board, we can have that discussion, but to sit there and say, if we don't do this, we're cutting people, that's the only thing. To me, I don't see that, I see other areas that honestly ought to be a focus before we even have that discussion. That is like a last resort.
We, we have a budget, city budget, we approved in April, May, and very fresh, each department has its own line items, and we all approved it. We're staying within those boundaries of the statistics.
Actually, you didn't approve it.
And before we cut.
Well, I didn't vote for it, you're correct, I did not.
Before we cut anything, I would, I would involve the organized, organizations to talk about solutions prior to any kind of decrease in standards.
But we talk about cuts, we, we all, we all had, we had a, across the board, generally across the board reduction in our budget. We've been very flat in our city budget the last several years. So, at the time of our budget discussion, there, we, we, we have zero capital except for five squad cars, zero, zero.
Commissioner Decker, what do you have?
Yes, sir. First of all, I think it's a shame that we can't look at the, that county.
You can, it's gone.
Commissioner Collin, I joke about that often, that is a shame. We, we do speak about pensions, and, and I am happy with what this city has always done. And I am a bit skeptical of the state laws to, having us go in the direction that we go. Having said that, I am not an expert, so I am very cautious when I talk about that. I'm, I'm very open to other people's opinion and knowledge. The situation we're in right now, I do think there are some places we can control costs. I think there are some investments we could make. I think that Jeff and I were speaking earlier today about vehicle services. At Public Works, for example, we have two mechanics. And what is holding us back from possibly putting on a third, and then maybe taking on some of the city's maintenance, all of our oil changes and rotations and everything like that, where I really think we could save quite a bit of money, what's holding us back from that is our, our facilities. We're just unable to put on a third and put a lift and actually do more work. So if we could, if we had a different facility, would we be able to actually turn a profit or, or bring in revenue for the city? I do believe that if we had the investment of an additional garbage truck, that we could do our entire garbage recycling service potentially with less routes. I'm cautious when I say that, though, because this is all an investment, with every investment, there's a little bit of risk, so I wanna be very careful how I say that. These are things I believe, but I do believe them to be true. I think, as Commissioner Densberger has spoken about numerous times, home rule issue, I think it is something that we need to look at. I do not think right now the public would be supportive of it, because there is a lot of mistrust of government. I don't think the government does not trust us. I think, I think the people in East Peoria, for the most part, does trust us, they don't trust what could be coming down the road, and there is a fear of what could. They don't trust what could be coming down the road, and there is a fear of what could happen. But I think Commissioner Densberger's thoughts in the past have been purer as what we could do with this. Me, myself, I look at the garbage fee that some communities have placed, the communities we've mentioned tonight. This is something that the city of East Peoria could put right back into the streets. Every dime we got from that, we could put into the streets, therefore have a guaranteed revenue stream for our roads that right now are not being funded. If we did that, we could look at some sort of a restaurant or, I can't remember what, food and beverage tax. It, it would be a tax of choice. People that choose to go to restaurants would be the ones that would pay that. So, these are areas that I think would be beneficial for the city. In our case, though, it would take a referendum of the people of East Peoria making that decision to happen. Right now, I don't know if that is viable. I don't know that, if, if people would go for that, if, if there would be that trust there to do it, it would take a, a huge public information campaign, something that we'd all have to get behind if we did agree with it. So, having said all that, the situation I think we are in right now, my feeling is, I feel that we do need to do the sales tax. Not because I want to put in a sales tax, or, or I want to be where a different community is or anything else. I know what service level the people of East Peoria expect, and I, I believe that the sales tax can keep us there. I do think Commissioner Callen is correct. We need to look at everything and make sure that we're not wasting a dime. That is easy to say, is difficult to do, as, as we all can attest to. I don't think anybody up here, I, I certainly could not accuse anyone up here of wasting money, not intentionally. So, I am at the point where I believe we need to do a sales tax, but I am also at the point where I will consider any option that anybody will bring to me, including the ones that I've mentioned. Potential investment opportunities, if we can find a way that we can invest a bit of money, therefore make more money in the long run. So, that's where I am, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Densberger?
You know, I think it's, it's fairly obvious that we have to do something on the revenue side. I agree with Commissioner Callen. We need to do, take a continuing look at expenses. I'm certain that there are some things we could do that would not impact personnel. Are we going to make up our budget deficit through expense reduction? Not without cutting staff. If you cut staff, you're cutting services. It's simply not going to happen. We are going to have to look at another revenue stream. To me, property tax is not something I'm willing to, to do. Sales tax, I think that's a double-edged sword. I, personally, I don't think we're there yet. I, I think we need, need to take a longer view. I believe that the solid waste fee is a very viable option, because it turns a city service into an enterprise fund, much like water and sewer. And it does offer some, some relief to the general fund. I would like to look in greater detail at a stormwater fee. But, you know, that's somewhat far further down the road. I do believe that home rule is the longer-term solution. In general, Commissioner Decker, I think you're right. People don't have a great deal of trust these days in their government. However, if you look at simply what's happened in this last budget with the state, I think that there are some distinct advantages to any municipality that can take on the maximum control of their own affairs as possible, and that's what home rule is. It would allow us to look at other revenue streams that go more directly to problems, such as a motor fuel tax. So, I guess at this point, I have most interest in the solid waste fee and actively pursuing cost controls. Hopefully, that doesn't get into personnel, but I can't guarantee that would not. And then take a longer-term view and taking a real effort at attaining home rule status for our community, because it opens the, the door to a lot of advantage, not just revenue advantages, but operational advantages to the city that I think would benefit us moving forward.
Commissioner Decker, it's your, it's your area as far as the solid waste. Is a garbage fee something that you would endorse?
It would be a hundred and twenty dollars per residence. No. You saw the impact of nineteen dollars per year on the average homeowner when we talked about property tax increase last year, and the anger that that caused. That, I can't remember what the dollar amount was that it would, spoke about raising, but a garbage fee would be a hundred and twenty dollars a year. If we talk about a sales tax, if I spend five thousand dollars a year in the city of East Peoria on, on sales tax items, I believe that's twenty-five dollars increase in a year. A hundred and twenty-dollar increase in garbage tax is enormous. So, that, that, and I don't disagree with Commissioner Densberger in the desire to do it. Certainly, I want to. Because I feel that we need to increase revenue. But I think that it is a tax on, it's a tax people can't get away from. It's not a choice. A sales tax can be a tax of choice. People can shop around and people can, it's not on food, it's not on medicines. So, people can choose, for the most part, there are some things people have to buy, but people can choose to make those decisions of what they're, they're going to buy. If we place it on something like a garbage fee, the reason that I'm not, I'm not eager to do that, I'm not, I'm not saying I won't do it, but I'm not eager to do it, is because it is, it's oppressive. You, you have to pay it, or you don't get your garbage picked up. And I believe that, in my own case, I've looked at this quite a bit, how much do I think I spend a year on items that are eligible for sales tax? In the east, in the city of East Peoria, my guess is somewhere around five thousand dollars. So, my fee personally would go up about twenty-five dollars. But if I look at the garbage fee, a hundred and twenty-dollar increase a year is enormous. And when I look at the impact, the garbage fee impacts only people from East Peoria. Sales tax, it's about a ten-to-one ratio. Approximately nine or ten people from outside of the city of East Peoria spend a dollar in East Peoria for every one person that spends a dollar from the city of East Peoria. So, I will consider anything for the reason or purpose of, of getting us through this budget crisis. It's not something that I want to do, however, because it provides us, I believe, 1.1 million dollars. This year, we spent three hundred thousand dollars in roads, nowhere close to the amount of money we need to spend. So, I'm, I'm not debating with Commissioner Densberger. Will I consider it? I'll consider anything. It is not something I want to do, however. I, I, that's why I look at sales taxes being the more viable option, because I feel our roads are in too bad of condition not to do something, not to do something immediately.
Okay. Commissioner Jeffers here. Go ahead.
Jeff, looking at the budget for eighteen, nineteen, we're several months into it now. Using your numbers, is it approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a month less? We'll have money to spend if we just kept things, revenues the same for the next budget year. You're looking at a 1.2 million dollar.
That's if the revenues stay the same. Stay flat. We already know that revenues are declining. So, in, in my memo, I, you know, I kind of estimated the, the decline in revenue about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Most of that are, is, you know, my estimate of gaming dollar losses.
It'd be at least a hundred thousand a month less. We don't know, but that's, that's the amount of money we would, we, if we look at budget reductions and savings. We need to find a hundred thousand dollars a month savings to be where we're at today. And it, in the new budget, all we have, what you said, you would still have enough money for five new police cars budget-wise. We'd still be only spending six hundred thousand for streets in the next budget year.
Yep.
And no more capital for anything else.
And, and nothing going to reserves.
And nothing in the reserves. So, that's not acceptable. Unless you come up with a hundred, show me a hundred thousand a month just to get us where we're at today. And I don't see it. Maybe it's there. I, I would like, love to see it. We, we reduced it that much in the budget process the last year, last two, three years we had.
Yep.
But to do it again, can we? Maybe. I don't know. I'm, I'm open to see it. We might be able to save one or two personnel with productivity and garbage or some things, or locates. We thought about farming that out. We can maybe do that and use our people in-house to do some things that save us some money. That's where I see, I'd love to be able to keep on reducing our dollars, but maintain, maintain what we have, but we've been doing that for the last several years.
What do you want to do, Commissioner? What's your proposal?
My proposal is, we can enact the sales tax, and we can pull it off whenever we feel like we don't need it anymore. And I think we've demonstrated the need. Twenty, you know, twenty-five, it's, it's, it's by choice. It's less than fifty dollars a year for most people. It's, it's the most, it's the least painful of anything we can do. For this council over the years, Commissioner Densberger has mentioned, as far as the property tax levy, it's true. It all, it all goes to our pension, the line item, basically. But we've really essentially, as councils as a whole, held that number flat. The community knows that. I don't know if you get any credit for it, but, you know, all of your tax bill is not going to the city. We're getting about fifteen, eighteen percent of that bill.
Not even, about thirteen and a half.
You know, so I, I don't really apologize for that part of our part of, of the property tax, you know, I really don't. I think we've, as a group, have done our job. So, I would, I would say, you know, I, I think the, the public would appreciate us taking some action and take some stress off their, their life, you know, and enact this. It, I do like that the, we talked about this back in April a little bit and before. The sales tax spreads it out amongst the region, not just our own residents. It does spread it out. It's, it's a fair, it's a user-type tax. The more you spend, the more you use, pay, but that's by choice. It doesn't, I don't think, cause any real hardship, so, overall, in, in today's world. But I would say, let's please get the sales tax on as soon as we can. I would go for the October one date. So, that means sometime in September, we need to make a decision. Need at least three of us to do that. And then if there's a, a great savings of money, and we can do all these other things, and we don't need all that sales tax, back it off a quarter or something, but I think we go for it and, and say it's, it's what we need to do. The state's really tied our hands with this.
Jeff, beyond the five years with our financial situation as far as bonds and everything in consideration, do you see things getting better?
Yeah, the, you're about five years into most of your bonds, so.
Our vulnerabilities right now.
The vulnerability is the next, say, you know, ten years. You get out fifteen, I think the first bonds start peeling off in twelve years. Ten, eleven, twelve years now. You get out fifteen, the, the future is very bright from a revenue standpoint. Although, you know, the tax increment financing districts will go away about that time, so a lot of the property taxes will go back to the traditional split.
So, our biggest vulnerability is for the next five years.
Five to eight years, yes, is your biggest vulnerability.
So, right now, right now, we don't have a consensus for sales tax. It's not, it's not here for tonight. Maybe if it settles in, people think about it, but it's not here. What we do have a consensus for is to look at pension possibilities, to curtailing the cost even more, going back, looking at that. I think that also that, in light of that, we might want to look at our assets, including property that we have, that we can sell. If we're going to go to the point of, of talking about laying off people, it's time to involve the representative staff in this conversation for a partnership in helping us re-lead this if we can, or solutions. But that's where we're at tonight.
And I have no way advocating for, for layoffs. That's the, the, the last thing I want to look at from, from my position. But it is, it's an option I have to throw out there because it is one of the things we do control.
So, perhaps, well, and I'm not trying to cut the meeting short or anything, but.
And I'll tell you, tell you what my preference is.
We may need, and I don't think it should be done with individual commissioners. I think I can be dialogue, but that another public meeting to discuss this is appropriate.
What is your recommendation?
My recommendation would be the sales tax.
Sales tax?
The, the sales tax would be my recommendation. Because it does, like, it's been talked about, it does spread the load out to not only East Peoria residents, but also other residents that shop in town. The garbage fee is a direct fee on the homeowner, directly on the homeowner. I think property tax increase would be, in some aspects, a better increase because it would hit the homeowner less and also increase the fees that the business contribute to the, the, the city coffers. So, it, none of them are easy choices. I, I think the, the sales tax is the easiest. I know I said in here I would love all three, because then I could truly set up a true budget, long, dealing with longer-term issues, set up a CIP, set up a, a reserve policy, and actually set money aside on an annual basis to, to get to maybe a three-month, you know, where we have cash on hands to operate for three months, as a three-month reserve policy. Ninety days is kind of a happy medium where a lot of communities set that as their policy. Some are a little shorter, some are a little longer. But I understand that none of this is easy. It's not easy from my part. It's not easy from the individual directors' parts within the departments. Some departments have extremely high percentage of salaries with very limited ability to address other needs. You know, they have very small operational budgets. And if you look at the gas pump right now, gas prices in the last week have went up at least a dime a gallon, if not more. And you have to have a, a large enough budget in, for fuel to, to cover any variance in fuel costs. I don't know what it's going to be like a year from now from fuel, and you look at whether it's police, fire, or Public Works, fuel is a fairly large item in the budget.
You made your point. Your, your recommendation is why we need it. I think also to identify the core, the core services, what really are, because we do a whole lot outside of the core services.
We do.
And we want to help anybody we can, but we really maybe need to look at those core services.
And some of the non-core services we do don't have a huge impact on the general fund budget. They're supported by other funds. Hotel motel tax supports a, a lot of what's going up on East Side. So, there's not a lot of general fund dollars going that direction. So, just closing East Side doesn't free up a lot of general fund dollars, and it's a very difficult decision to even have that discussion.
Would council entertain another meeting in the future?
Sure.
I'll work with council to, to schedule something and work with the individuals to get stuff done, and we will continue to work at staff on controlling costs.
Let's sink in, and you be the, the guy we go to as far as possible. I'm not, I'm not in favor of sales tax. I just gave my thoughts really as far as the pension possibilities and property and looking at course.
I, I appreciate the discussion tonight. It will help me going forward, so it's not an easy decision for any of us.
Very good. People in the audience want to speak to the council on this matter? Please come forward. Five minutes. Ty, you got the machine running? Where's Ty at?
Ty left.
Oh, Ty's in trouble.
Cutting costs, one item I didn't hear tonight was cutting salaries. I worked at Caterpillar thirty-five years, and I had all kinds of salary cuts and benefit cuts. So, why don't we go back and say, citywide, everybody. So, why don't we go back and say, citywide, everybody, including Mr. Decker, take, say, a ten percent pay cut? And if it needs a labor negotiation, we'll do that. So, everybody participates.
That's what I was referring to, Mr. Holting.
Pardon?
That's what I was referring to on organized labor and bringing them in the fold.
I can't.
I said, that's exactly what I was referring to. Keep going, keep going.
Okay. And then, if Mr. Jeffers was talking about efficiency, improve efficiencies. When I drive down a road and I see a water main break, and there's, out on Highview Road last winter, there was a water main break and there was ten city vehicles sitting there and probably nine or ten people. And most of them were standing around. So, why do you need two, there was two backhoe loaders out there and pickup trucks, foremen's trucks, and there was at least two one-ton service-type vehicles, stuff like that. There was a, three or four dump trucks, single-axle tandem dump trucks. So, we've got to improve our efficiencies. Is Bass Pro paying for itself on our loans for, like Bass Pro? City manager, is it paying for itself? Are we subsidizing that project? Do you know?
I don't know the exact answer to that. That's a very complex answer and would take a, a larger, longer discussion than.
What about the levy district? Is it paying for itself?
In the aggregate?
In the aggregate, yes.
In the aggregate, if you.
So, why don't we go back and renegotiate some of these agreements, so we're getting more tax dollars from the agreements?
Renegotiation takes both parties, sir, and I.
Well, let's, let's put all our expertise to work and do it.
That would be a possibility, I suppose, but in the aggregate, the development is a positive, a significant positive to the city coffers.
Well, it's positive, but my street's falling apart and I haven't gotten anything out of that.
You asked about whether or not it was, it was making money. Yes, sir, it is.
So, if you implement a ten dollars, say, a tonner, I think Morton's fourteen dollars a month, garbage fee. I don't generate garbage five or six months a year, so I don't pay the fee. Is that correct?
This is not my idea, sir.
It hasn't been proposed yet.
But I mean, it's, because if.
I would assume if a fee is imposed, that's every household, whether you put trash out or not.
Okay. Because if I don't use water five or six months a year, my fee goes down.
Right.
So, if I don't generate garbage.
Hey, I'm not going to.
I mean, that's something to look at, okay?
You won't see me supporting the fee.
That is, that is a question I brought up earlier today, wondering if, if it would be every month.
A consumption fee, yeah, yeah. Okay. Are we, when are we going to recycle glass? Because that glass, those of us who recycle glass and haul it to Peoria once a month, the rest of the glass picked up in East Peoria is going to landfill. Landfill weight, or glass weighs a lot compared to newspapers or something like that, so we're paying a tonnage fee dumping glass in a landfill when we could haul it down to Pekin and recycle it, so.
We've learned that it, I had thought that, until recently, that it would be less expensive for us to put it in recycling than in a landfill. My most recent conversation with Rick Simonsky suggests that that's not true. It's because of some change in the recycling practices or where they can use the glass. So, since we don't have a recycling facility in East Peoria or close to East Peoria, the transportation costs of glass have gone up significantly, so I don't know that that's true anymore. I'm not sure, but that's, that's at least what I believe.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Don?
Well, I had the unique opportunity of sitting through the strategic planning, so I kind of understand some of the pain that you guys are going through right now. But as well, on the other side, I hope you guys can understand the pain that we go through every time we're asked to pony up. I don't have any good answers, and I talked to every one of you in length about a lot of things. I have to say that if you take and you look out ten years, you can't tax us enough to keep covering all the costs. Something has to be done, one way or another, whether it's to start, implement the half percent sales tax, go to the garbage fee. You're going to find your, you know, there's just no way you've got yourself in a position that you're going to recover through the next ten years. You might say, well, we'll take a half a percent this year, but next year, you're going to say, well, we're going to have to do the garbage fee because how are we going to cover the next, on the next. I mean, you've got, you know, two, two point nine million dollars, and a half percent's two and a half million dollars, and you're going to take part of that for streets and, you know, the deficit and, you know, where are you going to come up with the rest of it? It's just going to grow. I've done twenty-year charts on pensions, taxes, you know, benefits, and it becomes astronomical. I don't think anybody realizes in twenty years what those costs are going to be. So, while you're sitting here today looking for this little short-term solution, there's a long-term problem out there. Somehow, it's got to, you know, change drastically, place the structure, you know. Unfortunately, you know, the wages are an issue, work, laying people off are an issue. Nobody wants to lose money, nobody wants to be laid off. And so, reduction of costs, efficiencies, it, it all needs to be looked at very hard. But I have to say, even though I really don't want to add any money to my, add anything to my costs, the half a percent sales tax seems pretty viable at this point in time. It is a choice that a lot of us can make, whether it comes spend our money down here, go to Washington or go to Morton. You know, it's about the same distance, no matter where I, I, I go, from where I live. You know, and I, what am I going to say? So, it, it is a small, I agree with Dan, it's a small amount to add that way. The garbage fee, you know, just about, as you say, every city pretty much puts them in place and, but they're also providing the three services, the garbage, recycle, and yard waste. And, and it's an enterprise. You know, at ten bucks, you're short a buck fifty-seven on your calculation. It's about eleven fifty-seven to break even. You add in your yard waste and you add another dollar and a half to two dollars to that. But you're going to end up going to that sooner or later. It's one of those things that you're going to have to look at hard and consider. Stormwater, just about every city's going to that. A lot of them already have it, you know, based upon a score footage of, footage of them per surface. It's something that, you know, I would bet my bottom dollar that eventually, we're going to have that here. You know, these are things that, why nobody wants them, and especially, I don't want to keep ponying up and, and, you know, I own a house and my taxes keep going up, and these basically are taxes. When it comes time to sell it, you know, people are going to look at where, where we stand. So, and that's one of the things I look at right now, is where does East Peoria stand with other places? And right now, we're not too bad, that we can't add a little bit to it, and still, you know, if I wanted to move somewhere else, am I going to drop my tax bill? It's not going to be that much. So, while current census projects the city's losing five hundred people this year, you know, Illinois is losing a lot of people. Business tax just jumped two percent, you know? So, in the grand scheme of things, I'm glad I'm on this side, and you guys are the ones that have to make that decision. I said, I, I sit here, I, I've, I've been here for four years, I've listened, I've taught everybody, and I understand the pain you're going through. And, and I realize that this is going to be a very hard decision, whatever it is that you make. But, you know, everybody's got to understand that there are some things that have to happen. And from my point of view, I would support the half percent sales tax, and you need to consider.
Would you, would you support both of them together?
Yeah, absolutely, I would. It's a hard pill to swallow, and it's a hard thing to say, but once again, I've looked at everything. I've run numbers, and I've run them out for twenty years, and, you know, I, I just don't see a lot of options out there unless you're willing to take out five people, out of every department, or, once again, ten percent off the top and everything. Pensions are going to be there no matter what. State says you're going to pay them. Run some numbers out for the next twenty years on the pensions.
Oh, we've got them.
Yeah. I mean, you've got them all.
If you make these run, they'll wait ten years.
Thanks, Don.
I mean, you've got three percent every year that the pensions go, you know, they're, they're automatically adjusted up three percent, but you're not taking in.
Thank you, sir, very much.
But, yeah, it's a hard decision, and I hope that we come up with some good ideas and able to work through all of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Zimmerman, good to see you tonight.
Bobby Zimmerman, eight hundred Ridge Road. I am a city employee and also a taxpayer. So, a couple of points that I think have gotten lost are, we do give a quarter cent of our sales tax to the school district. I'm a proponent of the school district, absolutely, but that same dollar that's being spent, whether it's Pekin, Washington, Peoria, the city's not getting the same amount of money out of that dollar. And is that another eight years, I believe?
Eight or ten.
Eight or ten. So, if we did a sales tax, which you guys all have to decide what we're going to do, we could, we could adjust it to where maybe that sun sets and this one takes over, or we drop it back another quarter percent, so we're only taxing the citizens an extra quarter. With that, maybe we can look at the county, how they pay that. What is it, a half a cent? That I think everyone in this room is agreeing, we don't get much out of. So, if this, raising this sales tax for this little bit, whether it's five years or eight years, whatever we could decide as a group, there's other ways we can lower that rate in the, in the meantime. And I understand nobody wants to pay more and nobody wants to pay more taxes, but at what point are we not going to be able to provide the services that we do? And I understand we can cut costs, maybe a little bit here, a little bit there, but then this isn't the same town that we're in. We're not having a parade. I'm sure Doug's got some good ideas going to East Side. We're not going to be looking the same if we cut those costs. And I understand that the, the pension is there. I would be happy to sit with any one of you guys, or Mr. Becker, or Mr. Eater, and there are some alternative funding mechanisms that we can do. Absolutely. Whether we all agree on those or not, I can't, I can't make your decision for you, but they are out there, and I would be happy to introduce those and speak on those and try to provide some relief in the short term.
We'll take you up on that.
I think the number is a little off, that hundred and twenty dollars a household, in my math, but I'm not a mathematician, would be about twenty-four hundred dollars if I was to spend that at Target to make up that half a percent. So, that same hundred and twenty dollars that we would put on every resident that we know, when we tried to do nineteen dollars, this place was packed. We're looking at the sales tax and there's not as many people. I think that's that number, is twenty-four hundred dollars, that you would have to spend at Target. I don't, does anybody have a different number?
I don't trust Decker's calculations.
If we raise it, if we raise it a half a percent, I think it's like two, twenty-four hundred dollars.
If, if we raise it a half a cent, if I spend five thousand dollars, the half a cent equates to twenty-five dollars a year, I believe to be correct. I believe. So.
So, is it a half a cent or a half a percent?
It's half a cent.
It's a half a cent.
A half, okay. So, it's not a half a percent, a half a cent.
Right.
So, it's even less. So, I think, I think if we're looking at every option, that we're better off and it will be more supported if we can do something that's not going to tax every citizen. As Commissioner Densberger pointed out, we've kept the tax rate, the property tax rate almost flat for ten years, and at some point, people have to understand that we have to pay a little bit more for the same service. I don't expect it to buy the same pair of tennis shoes ten years ago for the same price today. But if anybody would like to take me up on those pension options, I would be more than happy to speak on them.
Thank you, Bobby, very much. Anybody else? All right, seeing no one else, is there a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Is there a second, please?
A second.
Mr. De, Densberger, Mr. Decker, roll call, please.
Mr. Decker.
Hi.
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 Hi. We are adjourned. We've got to get Dennis.